Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, July 11th, 2022 of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Mr. Berman, if you could call the roll.
Commissioner Gundy.
Present.
Commissioner Forstie-Groff.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Chief.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the heart of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Our first quarter of business this evening is a proclamation for Park and Recreation Professionals Day. We will be bringing that. Mr. President. Yes, Commissioner.
Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity; and whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by providing frontline jobs, childcare for essential workforce, and promoting community revitalization; and whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through engaging virtual and physically distance programs, dynamic online events, and new learning opportunities designed to keep families active while stay-at-home orders are in place and beyond; and whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits; and whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities; and whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape; and whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and facilitating conversation and services in order that our communities may heal both physically and emotionally; and whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, promoting the ecological function of parkland; and whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities; whereas the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners supports the skilled work of Parks and Recreation professionals to strengthen community cohesion and resiliency, connect people with nature and each other, and provide opportunities for healthful living, social equity, and environmental sustainability; whereas the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners values the essential services that Park and Recreation professionals and volunteers perform to provide recreational and developmental enrichment for our children, youth, adults, and seniors, and to ensure our parks and recreational facilities are clean, safe, and ready to use. Now therefore be it resolved, the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim July 15th, 2022, as Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Professionals' Days in Haverford Township, adopted this 11th day of July, 2022, Haverford Township Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. We now move to the Citizens Forum, which consists of 20 minutes of registered speakers and then speakers on agenda items. We have a couple of people who have registered for the registered speaker portion. I invite Jay Field to the podium.
I just want to thank tonight the Board of Commissioners for supporting us in this five-year endeavor to get permanent lights at our field. There are three people that I want to just acknowledge in addition to the board, and that is past Commissioner Andy Lewis for all his efforts in getting this started and conversation, so we can't thank Andy enough. We also want to acknowledge and thank Brian Barrett, Parks and Recreation, for all the hours and time that he put into this effort and support in working this to a conclusion. Lastly, I want to just thank one of our board members, Sean Egan, who has been instrumental in getting a lot of this light work done for the lights. So tonight, we are giving to the board our $8,000 check to present as our part of the agreement, and again, we want to just thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Field. Before we move on, is there anybody else who'd like to present a check to the township right now?
Anybody?
No. I'll give everybody a minute. Next on the list is Eric Horst.
So I'd just like to thank the Board of Commissioners this evening for considering Resolution Number 2270-2200. That's the resolution which calls on the U.S. Congress to pass the Women's Health Protection Act to reinstate the right to abortion at the federal level. The Supreme Court's recent decision in Dobbs was a devastating rollback for civil rights for women across this country, and it's part of a decades-long effort by right-wing special interest groups to pack that court with radical right-wing justices. This decision is rejected by more than two-thirds of the American public and likely by a similar margin here within this township. So I applaud the Board of Commissioners for recognizing this critical need for our federal legislatures to reassert their authority as a co-equal branch of government and reestablish this right that has been unjustly stripped by the court. And while I remain hopeful that people will be galvanized to elect officials at the federal level to reinstate this right, I also recognize that this issue is now going to likely play out at the state and local level, possibly for many years to come at this point. And we know that the far-right and its allies in Harrisburg are prepared to enact the strictest and most dangerous abortion restrictions they can possibly pass, whether that's through the election of a far-right insurrectionist candidate for governor or through constitutional amendments which are currently being pushed through the state legislature past midnight. So I think for that reason, it's important also for our local governments to be prepared to ensure that local taxpayer dollars are not being wasted implementing dangerous and unjust laws which may be passed by the state legislature. So in addition to this very important ordinance which the township is considering here this evening, I would also ask the Board of Commissioners respectfully to consider, you know, what other options are available to it within its authority to pass ordinance that ensures that our taxpayer dollars and our resources here in Haverford Township are not being wasted on enforcing such unjust laws. So again, I would thank the Board of Commissioners again for their consideration of this important resolution this evening, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horst. Next is Kim Rosano.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Kim Rosano. I'm here as a resident, mother of four, grandmother to three girls. The decision of this board to pass a meaningless but highly inflammatory resolution has only one purpose, and that is to divide, to set neighbor against neighbor over a controversial issue in which there are strong feelings on both sides. It's a shameful exercise, and you should all be better than this. What is the purpose? No practical action will be achieved, only division, and some unworthy people have to use for their political advantage. I can only hope that the people of this great township that I call home see through this farce and hold the organizer responsible. I'm here to ask the Commissioners to consider the damage they are doing to our community by fueling anger and division over something that is completely outside of your area of responsibility. You're here to represent the constituents and their feelings and what they want, not to fuel your political agenda. It has no purpose and no legitimacy. Let the cooler heads on this board show respect for all the people they represent and withdraw this divisive resolution. Nothing in this constitution provides for public funding for abortion nor for any other right pertaining to abortion. Passage of this amendment leaves every current Pennsylvania abortion law in place. Nothing changes for Pennsylvanians, nothing. This amendment was passed by the PA Legislature in response to efforts by the Pennsylvania's abortion businesses to have the Pennsylvania Supreme Court declare that abortion has evolved into a constitutional right. It is not, thus requiring Medicaid to fund elective abortions with taxpayer money right up to the day of birth and for elective abortions. The amendment does not outlaw abortions, rather it prevents abortion from being controlled by the judicial fiat. It establishes the Constitution's silence on abortion activists. Judges are legally prevented from improper overreach, keeping the power to regulate abortion in the legislature rather than subject to the whims of the court keeps those who make our laws representative of and answerable to the people.
Thank you. I am sure Ms. Rosano won't be the only person to speak eloquently on that issue, so if we can just let everybody speak, that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Rosano. Mr. Parrott, John Parrott.
May I begin by thanking you all?
Certainly.
I've appreciated in my decade and a half here that this township is complex to run, and you people get into the fine grain of it, and I'm grateful. I see what a job you've taken on. I wanted to single out Larry Holmes. He's been very helpful to us in the 6th Ward and helped me and my family with a real regulatory tangle within the last year or so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Parrott.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, sir.
On behalf of all.
Right. I'm sorry, we're probably on opposite sides here, and I hope the next time something comes up, we'll be on the same side. The Women's Health Protection Act, it's called, but it's not what it seems. It's, you know, you have people who don't want abortion at all, and you have people who want it up to nine months. It's really a nine-month act. It's very radical. And there's the danger that it's going to wipe out things that we have in Pennsylvania like a 24-hour waiting period, which is a time for reflection and has never hurt anybody. The protections of the Pennsylvania Abortion Control Act are now endangered. Senator Collins of Maine, as this law was being put together, this proposal was being put together, pointed out it didn't have conscience protection for healthcare professionals. You don't want to see healthcare professionals forced to participate in these procedures if it violates their consciences, and Senator Collins was very correct to point that out. There's a kind of balancing point in all this, you know? There are people who are against abortion, get rid of it, and there are people who want all nine months, that's where New York State seems to be going. Probably, truthfully, it'll be a while before people such as me, I want to stop abortion, it'll be a while before we prevail. I think most people in Haverford Township and the nation are somewhere in between. Mississippi wants 15 months, 15 weeks. I found out France has 14 weeks, Germany has 12 weeks, Italy has 12 weeks, so Mississippi's not really out of line. Most people are really trying to split the difference, that's what we do, and there's going to be a big national debate going on. There are two national debates, one about abortion and the other, where to draw this line in terms of numbers of weeks. I don't think the township should get involved in this. I don't believe for a moment, knowing all my friends and acquaintances and the township, that everybody's on board with this. I think while these two debates go on, the township should back off and just make sure we're a safe, friendly, respectful forum while we continue to discuss this matter. Now, there's no, so obviously, I think the resolution is a mistake. If you do happen to pass the resolution, I would hope you would add a paragraph to it, which is asking the administration in Washington to begin to actively protect Supreme Court justices and abortion count, what do you call them, crisis pregnancy centers across the nation, because they're in trouble now. They're in the crosshairs, and they need protection too. So, all these positions are represented in the township, and I don't think the township should get ahead of any of us. There's a kind of rhetorical screen that's used when abortion is discussed. We all believe in protecting the rights of women. That's what distinguishes us as a civilization. There are places in the world where women aren't protected at all. But it's not one, it's two. That's the problem. We're talking about two people, two people, a woman and a child, and both take terrible damage from the institution of abortion, so I ask the township hold its fire on this one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parrott. There is one more registered speaker. She was not able to attend, but I did let Teresa Walter know that I would read her letter aloud. It's to the Commissioners. It's what she would be saying here if she was here. Ms. Walter writes to the board, and Teresa Walter of the 6th Ward. With all due respect, Larry, you and the board need to stop using your commissioner positions as your personal political soapbox. This board needs to focus on issues of importance to this township, the residents, and the business owners. You do not need to focus on federal issues or your own personal political agendas. The Women's Health Protection Act of 2021 that this board is motioning to adopt as a resolution is a federal issue, not something that this township needs to be spending time and resources on. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has not been impacted by the Supreme Court's ruling. If you are truly so concerned about protecting women's rights, how about also adopting a resolution to send a wolf for him to pass the PA House Bill 972, which is the Fairness in Women's Sports Act? I'm wondering, since the board has so much time to make proclamations, resolutions, and give speeches telling the citizens of the township how they should feel and how they should vote, have the Commissioners readied this township for any natural and man-made disasters or emergencies? According to President Biden, and I quote, "Food shortages are going to be real," end quote, does the board have a plan in place for when this does become real for our community? When families are struggling to put food on the table and feed their children, when retirees don't have enough money to pay their bills and buy food, how are you all going to help your constituent? Does the township have their own food bank started for residents? Have any funds been put aside to possibly give food vouchers to those most in need? Haverford Township already suffers from power outages, and according to NPR and the National North American Reliability Corporation, the U.S. should see massive power blackouts this summer. How have you planned to handle this emergency if it should happen to happen for township? Will there be cooling stations set up for residents? Will there be charging stations for communication devices? How about generators for the residents of our township whose lives depend on breathing and medical devices? With the cost of fuel rising and warning, there will be a shortage of diesel fuel. Does the township have a reserve of fuel and/or money to keep our trash trucks running on the regular schedule? Are our police vehicles built for patrols and emergencies? Are our fire trucks equipped to answer calls? If not, what are your plans to handle these situations? Speaking of trash trucks, what is the board doing to combat the amount of litter in our community and waterways? I don't think banning single-use plastic is going to fix the littering problem in our township, since the bags are not the problem. Larry, your ward is one of the biggest culprits of this problem. Just walk the bus route between Haverford Road and Belmont Avenue, and the amount of trash on the ground and in the creek, and the graffiti is a disgrace. That is just one area of the township suffering from this problem. I could go on and on about these things the board should be spending their time addressing, but I believe it was falling on deaf ears. One final thought, we are spending so much time appeasing the evils of the world that we are forgetting to do good and take care of each other. Thank you. Ms. Walter. Did I get that in under three minutes, Mr. Berman? We are now moving to the speakers for agenda items. Let me, if I just get a show of hands of folks tonight who expect to speak on any agenda item, just raise your hands. Okay, terrific. We are, I'm trying to confine comments to three minutes. There are quite a few people here. We did have five registered speakers. There's not going to be alarm at three minutes, but I remind everybody to, that we do try to confine our comments to that, and I would note already, it's been a very respectful conversation. I appreciate that continuing, and I will start here on the left, and no irony intended. And if anybody here in the front row would like to speak? Anybody in the second row? Is there anyone in the third row who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Alina Wisely. I live in the district. I am also here to speak on the proclamation that you guys wish to sign for women's rights. I also agree with everything Kim said. I will not say it as eloquently. I believe that you are not here to have anything to do with that. I also am a little bit disappointed that you don't know how the Constitution works. It's a state issue. If we start giving everything to the federal government, we might as well be a communist nation, because that's what it is. We have state-run governments, and that means that the people control. So we vote in who's in charge of state, and they take care of state matters. This isn't something for you to do. It is divisive, like Kim said, and it has nothing to do with you. This is nothing more than a virtue signal, and I'm sorry that you all feel so strongly that Roe v. Wade was done, but Roe v. Wade wouldn't have been done if people didn't want to abort while babies are in the birth canal, ready to be born. But that was why that happened. So I hope that you stop what you're doing, think about it, and don't vote on this proclamation, because it has nothing to do with Haverford Township, and there are plenty of other things, as have already been stated, that need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in that row who'd like to speak? Move to the row behind. And finally, in the, yes, in the final row.
Good evening. My name's John Williamson. I've been in this township for 62 years. I've been an attorney for 44 of those years, and I've handled probably 400 or 500 cases concerning constitutional law. And I just want to tell you a little bit about this act, this Women's Health Protection Act. Not only does it codify Roe versus Wade, it also codifies Doe versus Bolton, which was decided the same day and time as Roe versus Wade. This allows babies to be aborted up until one second before birth, and it allows babies to be aborted for the protection of the mother, even for her health. Before Roe versus Wade was decided, in Pennsylvania, it was a crime to have an abortion. And what Governor Shap was doing, sneaking this in before 1973, was he'd have two doctors say that the baby, the mother's life was in danger, and every time that they had women whose life was in danger, they looked to see who the doctors were, always psychiatrists. Two psychiatrists said the woman's life was in danger, and that's how they had illegal abortions prior to Roe versus Wade. The, one of the things that they want to not abolish in this rule, or to start all over again, is they want to do partial-birth abortion. And what that is, is a baby is delivered, leaving the head inside the woman's womb, and then they take a scissors, stick it in the baby's neck, and suck the baby's brain out, and then they bring the baby out, okay? And that's partial-birth abortion, was declared illegal by our Congress. This law brings that back into play. So I'm telling you, this is a crazy law. I can't believe that my township, where I've been living for 62 years, is coming up with this type of resolution, and I hope the heck it doesn't pass. God bless you.
Sir.
Good evening. I'm Matt Hank for the 3rd Ward. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I will be brief. I likewise urge you not to enact the abortion proposal you have before you. I have four reasons, three of which are substantive, and one of which is prudential. Reason number one is that although I have to acknowledge, the township and society at large is not nearly as pro-life as pro-lifers like me wish it were, it's not nearly as pro-choice as this agenda would, or this proposal would reflect. As prior speakers have said, the attitude in this township is somewhere in the middle of the continuum. This proposal doesn't respect that diversity of opinion. It is extreme even by the standards of this jurisdiction. I won't repeat everything Mr. Williamson just said, but there is not support for the kind of abortion as late in pregnancy as he described in this jurisdiction, which this statute would protect, which this statute would enable to happen. Reason number two, it is far from clear that the federal government has the constitutional power to regulate abortion. The issue hasn't been litigated definitively, so I won't go farther than that, but it's far from clear that that's the case. Reason number three, folks, be careful what you ask for. If it were established that the federal government could regulate abortion, you might not like what you get in a couple of years, when potentially, there'll be a Republican president and a Republican Congress. This is an issue that's at the state level right now. Prudentially, you may want to keep it there. Finally, there's a certain grandiosity underlying this whole proposal. The people in this room care about this. The people in this township care about this passionately. Frankly, nobody at the national level cares whether or not you pass this. So what you're doing by proposing this measure is introducing division and rancor in this township for no meaningful benefit. And I'm saying this, and I would say it even if you were considering a pro-life resolution that would reflect my principles. This isn't what you were elected to do. If you want to regulate abortion, please run for the state legislature. It's not what you should be doing at this level. Thank you.
Is there anybody on the left-hand side of the room who'd like to speak? Okay, so, front row here on the right side of the room, anybody who'd like to speak? Second row. Yes, sir. Come up. In the blue, or the black?
It's black. Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Fred Stagerwalt, 9th Ward, 237 North Bellfield Avenue. I'd like to congratulate Haverford Little League on getting the lights at their field. Just like, we've been working with Brian Barrett and the Parks and Recs Board to bring lights to the other side of the township, to, over to the 9th Ward. Currently, lights are, you know, at Haverford Little League, the Police Field, and Gunther Field. We went and looked at Glendale or J.D. McDonald Field as a possible location, however, due to a floodplain, we cannot add lights to that facility. So right now, there is an inequity or an imbalance of how lights are allocated for baseball, softball, and challenger within our township. So what I'm doing is, I'm coming to the Commissioners, I'll be willing to bring an $8,000 check to the next Commissioners' meeting if need be, from Haverford Township.
It would really help if you got one.
I know, Larry, I wish, I wish I actually had one in my pocket tonight, because I would have ran right up with it. But we do have a fantastic facility in the 9th Ward at Steel Field, the Hilltop Park area, so I asked the Commissioners to take a look at the township to create equity among the three baseball and softball leagues amongst the township, and to provide us all equal opportunity to play under the lights for all the children in the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Hello, I'm Tom Stevens. I've been a township resident for about 20 years. I'm at 601 Lakeside Avenue. My wife has been pregnant eight times, had five children, so first of all, I want to say, I recognize that it can be very, very difficult to become pregnant, and I know people who've been in unexpected pregnancies in very difficult situations. It's not easy. However, I'm confused why this group who does so many great things and makes this township so wonderful, I'm confused why this Women's Protection Act is being requested from the U.S. Congress. It seems like an overstep. It's just strange that this would even be going forth or put on the table. A woman's body is certainly worth being protected, and a woman should be in control of- opportunity to play under the lights for all the children in the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello, I'm Tom Stevens. I've been a township resident for about 20 years. I'm at 601 Lakeside Avenue. My wife has been pregnant eight times, had five children. So, first of all, I want to say, I recognize that it can be very, very difficult to become pregnant. And I know people who've been in unexpected pregnancies in very difficult situations. It's not easy. However, I'm confused why this group, who does so many great things and makes this township so wonderful, I'm confused why, why this Women's Protection Act is being requested from the U.S. Congress. It seems like an overstep. It's just strange that this would even be going forth or put on the table. A woman's body is certainly worth being protected, and a woman should be in control of her own body. The challenge is, is that when a woman becomes pregnant, there's another body, a completely separate body. Right at fertilization, there's a distinct DNA. There's a developing human, rapidly developing, in early pregnancy, the human is developing more quickly than at any other time of life. And there's a DNA that says, these are the unique fingerprints. Out of all the 7 billion people in the world, nobody's going to have the same fingerprints. Nobody's going to have the same eyes that could be scanned in a retina scanner. Nobody's going to be exactly the same personality, and nobody has the same future. It's a human. So, when we're talking about abortion, no matter where on the spectrum we are, we are talking about the removing of life in a pregnancy, and removing, ending the life of a human. And no matter whether it's a medical abortion, a pill, or a surgical abortion, whatever time for whatever price, it's taking the life, every time an abortion happens, it's taking the life of a human. And that's the difficulty with abortion. And I'm just confused why it's on the table. One way I like to think about it is, what if you saw somebody standing on a bridge over the Schuylkill River, and they were tossing a three-month-old into the river? Wouldn't you try to stop it, use any means that you could? Wouldn't you scream and yell and say, "You can't do that. This is horrific." And, and that's the same thing here. And so, I'm not screaming and yelling, but I'm saying, please, let's be thoughtful about this. And let's, let's take it off the table, because we really don't need to discuss it. Finally, what we ought to be doing is, let's continue to provide better services for women, and children, and families. We've got so, we do so much, but we've got so much more that could be done for women who need help, and for families who need support, and for children. And if we spend our time, our thoughts, our money on doing those things, we would have a better township and a better society. Thank you.
We're going to return to the front row.
Good evening, commissioners. Although I am against this resolution, I want to make clear that my address tonight is not so much about the issue at hand, but about the board in general taking political positions on national issues, and purporting that this would be the will of the people of Haverford Township. We elected this board to represent all of your constituents, you, your constituents, on township issues, not to be a conduit to the House or the Senate on our behalf. We already have the power to represent ourselves. If there is a controversial issue in your wards, you would generally meet with those people and, and get the opinions of those people, and make a judgment as to how to move forward after meeting with those people. In the last several years, this board has presumed to take a position on national controversial political issues and put forth a resolution as though it were the consensus of the people of Haverford Township. We did not give you permission to speak for us on such highly controversial issues. You are usurping powers beyond those afforded to you as commissioners by putting forth your own partisan opinions on controversial political issues that are outside of your purview. It is highly presumptuous of you to ask the township manager to send a resolution supporting the Women's Health Protection Act to the House and the Senate to be signed by the president on behalf of a township of 50,000 people. We talk all the time about the political divide in our country, and I believe that you are furthering that divide by presuming to present, to represent us in a manner without the consent of the people. This is wrong. I implore the board to vote against this resolution and to refrain from making further future township resolutions on controversial national political issues without the input of those that elected you. Thank you.
So, before I get to you, ma'am, anybody else in the second row? The third row? Ma'am.
Hello, everyone. I'm Hannah Campbell, and I've been a resident for 44 years of Haverford. This subject has nothing to do with women's health. Women have abortions at Lincoln on every hospital in this area. They can also use birth control. They can place their baby for adoption in foster care. I resent a previous speaker saying that something about the far-right, oh, God, the far-right, I'm sick of it. I am a person with the ability to speak my freedom without being labeled like I'm some kind of a far-right person. This is about babies. This is my baby's baby blanket. He was dead. He was six months in utero and stillborn, and I held him in my arms. He was fine. He was beautiful. And there should be no reason. When he was born at Lincoln, my husband and I were asked, "What would you like us to do with his remains?" And I said, "Where, what would you do?" "Well, Hannah, you can take him, or we will take him where the other aborted babies go." Where's that? In a field. My brother was instrumental in the Dr. Gosnell case. What he saw in West Philadelphia, baby feet in jars, babies' bodies frozen in freezers like turkeys. Now, you want to tell me this is about women's health? That's not what this is about. And shame on the people who think it. My baby had a funeral with a casket, a diaper, and clothes. Where are those babies going? Do you love them enough that you can give them? Not? No. We don't bury our dogs like this. The way these buried babies are aborted? Wow. We wouldn't do that to a family member. My mother suffered with Alzheimer's. We didn't smother her with a pillow, because she had no quality of life. You know, people talk on this issue, this is my first meeting, rights, women's health, blobby, blah, blah, blah. It's about the baby. And everyone in this room was born. Your mother didn't abort you. If you don't want your baby, don't get pregnant. Give the baby for adoption, as many members of my family have done. I'm instrumental in a grieving group at an area hospital about this. I see parents grieving around tables every month for their dead babies. And yet, we're throwing them in fields. This is so wrong, I can't believe it. And I just want to leave you with this. My dead baby was in this blanket. I held him. I kissed him. I buried him. Do not get involved in this woman's resolution. It's not what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Is there anybody else in that row who'd like to speak? Yes.
Hi, I'm John Druin of 1815 Arlington Road in Haverford. I'm here to talk about a somewhat less controversial issue of the floodwater mitigation plan. I just became aware of this, at the, where I guess there's a plan in place to do a study and a survey of the flooding that's happened on Winfield Road. I live just up the street from Winfield, in that section of Arlington, between Eagle Road and Hastings Road, where we also have a significant amount of flooding. When we first moved in about 20 years ago, we had heard that a long time ago, there was a lot of flooding in the backyards. They had done some sort of mitigation that involved excavating the, the other side of the land on the other side of the creek that's not inhabited. And that seems to have been effective, but still, the waters rise up so that they're about six inches from coming into my backyard. Now, actually, even more significant concern is, there's a large drainpipe that goes underneath one of my neighbor's properties. It carries a lot of the street storm water, you know, from the street into the creek. And when the creek rises up, it blocks that street water, and there's been a lot of street flooding. We've lost two cars from different floods. I've seen neighbors lose cars. I've seen a lot of people try to drive through it and get stranded and have to wade out of their vehicles. And in a couple of occasions, the floodwaters came to about, fortunately, our house is raised up from the street a little bit, but it came to about five feet in front of the door. So, why this is relevant is that if there's a specific focus on mitigating floodwaters in, on Winfield Road, and it just addresses that and kind of forces more water down the creek, ultimately, that'll result in more flooding in my section of Arlington. So, it ends up kind of like solving a problem in one district and then creating a problem in the other. So, I guess what I would ask is, is any plan that gets put in place, and any survey, really address both Winfield and that section of Arlington Road? Clearly, Winfield is more desperate. They've been really hit hard by a lot of the storms recently, actually going back over the last 20 years. So, fully support that part of the plan, but also want to make sure that the solution to that problem doesn't create a problem up the street. And I think probably that, you know, perhaps excavating or further excavation of that land on the other side of the creek is, you know, perhaps a solution that would lower the waters in the creek versus building higher walls that would then just funnel it further down and affect us. Thanks for your consideration.
Is there anybody else in that row who'd like to speak? Is there anyone else in the back row who'd like to speak? Yes.
Hi, I'm Debbie Volk. I have lived in this township for over 20 years. I just wanted to point out that Title 18, Chapter 26, in Pennsylvania law, covers crimes against unborn children. It was passed in Pennsylvania in 1997 because the governor and those in the PA House and Senate recognize the responsibility to protect the most vulnerable in our society, those that cannot speak or act on their own behalf, the unborn. It's an egregious and appalling act that you would support the Women's Health Protection Act. Abortion is not health care. It's a barbaric and heinous act that takes the life of an unborn child on par with Nazi experiments done in the name of medicine. The Women's Health Protection Act would make abortion legal until birth. It's extreme. Only China, North Korea, and Vietnam allow abortion after 24 weeks. I urge you to protect and support all the citizens of this township, both born and unborn. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in that row who'd like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name is Kate Kateri, and I live in the Seventh Ward, and I've been a Haverford, Haverford Township resident for two years now. And I just wanted to come and express my, my position that I hope that you will oppose, or that I oppose this Women's Health Reproduction Act that you're thinking about sending something forward to, about. When I was a senior in high school, my best friend found out that she was pregnant, as sometimes happens. And I was the kid who, you know, the best friend, so I took, took her to a Planned Parenthood for just a pregnancy test. And when she came out, she told me that she was pregnant. To my surprise, she said that she had already booked her abortion. And I was shocked, you know? I mean, we were just kids, we were just seniors in high school, you know? And when I spoke to her about it, she told me that, you know, just like the, "When are you going to have it done? And how are you going to afford this?" And I was really disappointed to find out that even though she was 18 years old as a senior, but that Planned Parenthood actually told her that if she wanted to, she didn't have the money, she, they could just make a fake name and lie and say that she was under 18, because then it would be free for her. And I, I think abortion is an issue I've never really wanted to get involved in, but sometimes keeps creeping up into my life. I know a handful of, of other women who have gotten abortions, and like that friend of mine from my senior year, it just seemed to be something that they did out of desperation, and something that they were pressured into by the, the men that were involved in their lives. So, I oppose this. I hope that, that you won't push anything forward and send it forward. I certainly don't think that abortion is health care for women. I think it's the exact opposite. It's terrible. And that's it. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Is there anyone in the back of the room who'd like to speak? And is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet but would still like the opportunity? Yes.
You have to figure, I was coming up for this one. I want to start by saying, abortion, I think it's a horrible thing to go through. I know of, it can have lasting impacts, and it can be a very awful procedure to go through, and it can even, the effects can last for years, decades, and, but, I can count on almost two hands, I guess, how many times where abortion care was needed in my immediate family. I'm not necessarily for just abortion. Well, we had a case where there was one trisoma 18, which is basically the baby was not going to be viable. But that is, and also too, there was a spontaneous abortion, also called a miscarriage. That has happened. There was cases where IVF, there was also selective choosing of the embryos to, to leave impregnated. And also, there's other care like a Plan B, stuff like that. Like, that was needed, and ironically, that care, that is under threat by potential abortion bans, ironically, that care led to four healthy kids that otherwise may not have existed had they not had that good healthcare that they need. And there are some, I mean, people think they can, the government can just write in all these exceptions, but it's pretty clear that they can't, because there's always, there's the thousand things that can go wrong. And I really feel for the families that have had to go through experience of not being able to get the abortion care they need to save the life of the mother, or handle the pregnancy of the one, or have to travel out of state to receive the care that they need. But I also too, I feel for the moral arguments too, because I get it, it's not to terminate what could potentially be a healthy child can be morally wrong. But legally, banning abortion can be a mess. I also wanted to say, I have a few notes, like late-term abortions, I believe a lot of that is, I get it, I get the moral thing with that, and I get why it can be viewed as awful procedure. However, those were exceedingly very rare, and only in instances of where, like, the child was not developing, or something major had gone, was going wrong.
I need you to wrap up, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, sorry. No one clinic or justice should ever feel threatened, should everybody, should feel safe. We should also be, I think we should also engage and be active in these issues and not hide away from them. But people should feel free to accept their rights. Equal rights and health care rights are not state issues, those are constitutional issues. I believe we are all entitled to them. Countries with abortion bans have more abortions than those that have free legal abortion. And is that, time's up?
Yes.
You know me, I could go on all day about this.
Thank you, Mr.
Stevens.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on any topic? On the agenda? There is another opportunity later in the meeting to speak on any topic. After we've gone through everything, we will now move to a discussion on the introduction of Phase Two. Actually, before we move on, I just want to say, thank you all for your comments, for your participation. Actually, before we move on, I just want to say thank you all for your comments, participating. And thank you to everybody in the audience to respectfully hear what everybody had to say and to react respectfully. So I appreciate greatly as do all of my colleagues, all of your comments and your thoughtfulness on this issue. Thank you. Let me now move on to introduction of Phase Two, the Haverford Township Facade Improvement Program. For anybody who's never been in a meeting before, resolutions take place later in the agenda. We first go through discussion points, updates, then we pass ordinances, then we get to the resolutions. So that's not going to be the next thing on the agenda. It's several steps down. Discussion of the introduction of Phase Two of the Haverford Township Facade Improvement Program. Mr. Berman?
Actually, Ms. Cuthbertson will take care of this one.
Terrific. Ms. Cuthbertson?
Hi, just to recall for all the commissioners and the public, several months ago, we introduced the Facade Improvement Program as part of our ARPA spending structure to help area businesses improve their facades. It was a win-win. We thought it was a win-win for business owners and for the community and business districts. It allowed up to $10,000 in a matching one-dollar-for-dollar grant program for exterior improvements. We had eight applicants during the period that we had offered, and we were able to award four awards totaling $25,000 and change. So those improvements are currently in the midst of being done right now. And applicants have nine months from award to actually have the improvements done, and then we will reimburse them on a dollar-for-dollar basis. If you recall, though, when we introduced this, the board and as part of our spending structure had allocated $250,000 for this initiative. So we clearly did not spend, you know, anywhere near that, so we still have plenty of money on this initiative. So the board, the working group that I am a part of, wanted to come back to the board and offer a Phase Two, as we had discussed when we introduced Phase One, and make it a little bit more lucrative and hopefully more attractive to business owners to take advantage of. So Phase Two would award up to $25,000 for the same exterior improvements, the same, all the criteria would remain the same other than increasing the awards. We also took away one of the, what we felt was a hindrance. A lot of the applicants that we spoke with, because there were some interested parties that didn't, couldn't even get the application in because one of the requirements was that they had to submit two estimates. And as we all know, as homeowners, even getting estimates is very difficult in today's day and age. So we eliminated estimates, we eliminated the need for two estimates if the grant application was only for $10,000 or less. So we hope that would also just remove a hindrance to area business owners to applying for the program. So we're not asking for any additional allocation. We're still working with that original 250. But we wanted to open up a Phase Two that would open up in August and last through October. It's the same group of individuals that were introduced during Phase One who are reviewing it. We have two individuals from HPD, Don Kelly and Jean Angel. We have Kelly Kirk, our zoning officer, Jesse Pointon from our zoning hearing board, myself, and Susanna Baruga from the Historical Commission. So we all review the applications that come in and make recommendations where some of those experts, not myself so much, but zoning and historic, can make to the applicants to even enhance their application. So again, we're not asking for any additional allocation. We just wanted to come to the board and say that we would like to introduce a Phase Two and hope that we would have support of the board to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbertson. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? We will move on to the Police Department update.
Thank you, Commissioner. The monthly chief's report for June of 2022, we had 28 criminal arrests, two juvenile arrests, 113 traffic citations were issued, 14 non-traffic citations, 153 written warnings were issued, 422 parking tickets were issued. We had a burglary on our block of Eagle Road. Found out that it may have been an ex-girlfriend, and the investigation is continuing. A burglary attempt at Pagano's Deli on the second floor. A homeless person got inside. There was $5 in currency taken. The person was arrested. Aggravated assault on police of the CVS at 1109 West Chester Pike. Police responded for reported retail theft that just occurred at the CVS at the Township Line in Vermont Roads. Witnesses reported that the suspects were parking near the Haverford Town CVS. Officer McGibney arrived and tried to stop the suspects. Two fled on foot and one fled the vehicle. While fleeing, the vehicle did strike Officer McGibney in the leg and ran over his foot. No injuries were sustained. We have one person identified, and they are from out of state. On that note, just so you're aware, the increase of retail thefts in our businesses is absolutely soaring. The stores on Township Line, the drugstores, it is totally out of control. It's troubling to me. It should be troubling to everyone because it seems that businesses don't want confrontation. They're allowing people to walk out of stores with large, large ticket items. We pay for those items ultimately. You know that. So I have instructed Lieutenant Kelly to contact the CEO of a very large business we have in the township to ask that they change their policies, that we are notified when the theft is in progress, not three days later. We can't do anything about that, but it has been a problem that I think that has to be addressed. It's not just here in Haverford Township, believe me. I speak to the other police chiefs in Delaware County, and they're all going through the same thing. So we're moving forward with that. I don't know where we'll go, but we're going to be aggressive in addressing this issue. We had aggravated assault in the 200 block of Edge Hill with a juvenile crisis. She was taken to Health Crisis Center. We have multiple vehicles, thefts from vehicles. Most of them were up in your ward, Judy, I'm sorry, Sherry. I get it right. Haverford Road, Railroad Avenue, Ballview Road, Rugby Road, Martin Avenue, Martin Avenue, Martin Avenue, one of the Dog Reserve Park. And we have one of 13 on 5 West Chester Pike. And then the one up at the, go back to the one to Reserve Park. A large amount of items were taken on a $500 gift card. And that was somebody that was there, left their purse in there when they walked their dog, and the window was smashed, which we have seen that many times before. We're also seeing an increase of bicycle thefts, expensive bikes. So we urge everyone with their children, anybody has a bike if they're out and about, lock their bicycles when they, when they're leaving their bikes somewhere. A lot of them were taken without locks on the bicycles. So I was asked to address the ongoing issue with thefts from mailboxes. To date, we've had 87 thefts from mailboxes. I can't even tell you the amount of money was involved there. Checks are for, you know, $50, $60, $90. They're washed with a, with a, with a, some sort of acid, and then they're rewritten for thousands and thousands of dollars. Most of the time, the bank makes that person whole, but it has become an epidemic. We, I think I made a report last month or the month before, we did arrest three people on Bill Road that were from New York, Brooklyn. I was in court last week when they were there, and they were held for court. But I urge everyone and to the public and to the commissioners, if you're mailing anything, I've said this before, take it to the post office and take it inside. The outside mailboxes at the post office are also targeted. So it's another epidemic that we're going through. You know, when we kind of nail down one thing, something else pops up. So these criminals get more and more adaptive to what they can do, and then, you know, they move on to something else. It's a problem. So some of the areas that we've seen the most problems are the Haverford Town Post Office, Manoa Shopping Center, and the Drexelville Post Office. That's the one in Upper Darby on Garrett Road, not the one in Pearlton Gardens. So on a lighter note, so on July 19th, the Flyers will be here with their community caravan out in the parking lot. And we'll also have the Race for Peace at the stadium. So it's a joint effort between the two of them. We'll have food and games outside now from 5:00 to 7:00. I urge everyone to come. We're going to put it on the signs tomorrow. So it's a community event for everybody to get involved, see gritty, and enjoy themselves for the evening. Also, National Night Out is on Tuesday, August 2nd, in the Lowe's parking lot. And I guarantee there won't be any thefts that night because we'll be there.
That's a big prediction, Chief.
That's another good night. We have a lot of people there. We have equipment there, fire trucks. You know, there's free food giveaway, so bring your kids, come down, meet the police officers, and have a good time.
Chief.
Yes.
Quick question. I missed what you said about the Fifth Ward and which streets. You said Valley View and...
I'll read them all to you, Laura.
Thank you.
So, let's see, motor vehicle thefts. Jerry, we had two in the 600 block East Manoa Road. And then the rest of them were 2,600 block of Haverford, 600 block of Railroad, 700 block of Rugby, 800 block of Martin, another one, sorry, 3 in the 800 block of Martin, and the Reserve Park. And I think on the ACB on West Chester Pike. So they're the ones in your ward, I believe most of them are. So all but one of them were unlocked vehicles.
Chief, in the mailbox thefts, those are, those are the US mailboxes.
That's correct.
Collection boxes. Have we had any reports of any, you know, some people leave their mail for their carrier in their own mailboxes? Have we had any reports of that?
The few that we have from those are, I'll call them rural-type mailboxes where they, they're at the, more towards closer to the street. I don't think we've had any where they're actually at the house, but we have had a couple from that type of mailbox.
And not to jinx us, but have we had a, are we experiencing a lull in the catalytic converter thefts?
They have dropped off. There was two on this list here, but they had dropped off also. But it's like, you know, our car vehicles had dropped off dramatically for three or four or five months, and now we have a dramatic increase again. Now the catalytic converters have dropped off. So it's just the wave of what we have. But I got to tell you, most of the people we're arresting for, whether it be catalytic converters, the mailboxes, or the thefts from the stores are from out of state, out of the area completely. So, you know, the word's out there that these big companies are allowing people to walk out. So this is what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on our agenda is the Bureau of Fire update, but there is no update this month, so we will move on from that. Township Auditor update.
Sorry, guys. I'm just getting my breath back and my speech back from the last time I was up here. But anyways, I have reviewed the warrants and expenditures for its meetings. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. And I also heard Brian Baird, I heard you're losing a key, Jesse Hart. Make sure I said thank you for your service to me because he's been excellent. As has your whole Haverford Town Hoops program. That's actually where I came from. That's why I don't have a suit on right now because I don't want to be burning on that court.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, Township Manager's update.
Commissioners, this evening has a number of items on the agenda. I want to focus on the library issue this evening. And I invited Bill Goldsmith and Scott Lowe from the Library Board of Trustees to be here this evening. If you would please come forward, I just want to talk a little bit about what's on the agenda, how we got here, and how we're going to go forward. And instead of me trying to wing it, I thought it would be best if you folks participated in the conversation. So I know the contract for the design of the library renovation was awarded back in 2016 by the Library Board of Trustees. It was a contract between the library and the design consultant. And I know that the Board of Commissioners adopted a motion that evening in January of 2016 to support that contract. And so we went through some iterations of design. We looked at a number of alternatives over the years, and here we are. The board has authorized the Township Manager to move forward with the design of the renovation and expansion of the existing library. So there's a contract on the agenda this evening. Could you just talk about what that contract is?
Let me just turn it over to Scott. Scott's a member of the board. He's an association elected member. He's been here from the get-go. He's a trained engineer. He's absolutely instrumental to this project, and he has served God knows how many hours. And we're lucky in the township and certainly on the library board to have him here. In 2015, based on funding that the township provided, we put out an RFP. The winner of that RFP was Casaccio and you. In 2016, we consummated an agreement with them. That was brought to the Commissioners. I think Commissioner Wexler actually brought that to the Commissioners. I think the solicitor at that time basically said this is really a contract between the library and Casaccio. But since the library, since the Commissioners were funding it, it was brought here for approval. Subsequent to that, I think in 2016, Casaccio was acquired by Bernardin. There was an agreement that provided the transfer of this relationship to Bernardin. I should say Mr. Casaccio, who was the key person for us. And Eric Trainer, the key architect who's been on this since day one, continues to work for Bernardin. I have intimate knowledge and details of what we're trying to do, of the library, of the people at the library, and so forth. So now, given the changes that have gone on in our decision to expand the size of the library by 25%, we had to go back to the drawing boards with Bernardin. There was still a lot of work that had to be done. Obviously, a lot of time has transpired since 2016, six years ago, and we've had pandemics and inflation and a whole bunch of other stuff. So Bernardin has come back to us with more money. We want to approve that. We want to get this going. We can't do any of the design work now until this is done. So Scott, why don't you just talk about the increases and the reasons for that?
Sure. Thank you, Phil. Afternoon or evening, everyone. It is a lot of money, no question, that the architect is looking to add to their contract. And I will say that, given the amount of money, I've tried to look very closely at the proposal the architect has offered, plus our construction manager has also looked at it very closely. We tested the numbers. We pushed back on the numbers. We've tried very hard to make sure that the numbers are reasonable and not, you know, basically taking advantage of the situation, which is that there's not a ton of competition right now on this increase. So we're satisfied, given the circumstances, which is chiefly that the library is adding on to the existing facility. And that's a great thing because it allows us to expand capabilities, expand areas, expand programming, really do a lot more than we would have otherwise been able to do with the building we had. But it also means that every space that we had previously planned and every wall location that we had previously identified and every sprinkler head that we had previously identified a location for, HVAC ductworks, electrical switches, all the stuff that goes into a building these days is probably not going to go exactly where we envisioned it would go a couple of years ago. And that means that all the drawings that were 90% complete before we stopped are going to have to be redone. Now, fortunately, we have, you know, CAD and other great software programs, but they still, someone has to do a calculation, and somebody has to use a brain cell and make sure that they get things where they have to go. Not to mention the programming and the idea that we really do need to still determine exactly how big the teen area is and how big the pre-teen area is going to be and how big the children's library is going to be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that all still needs to be done, and the design program related to that is really what's behind the increase. There are a couple of other, what I would say, not small things, but things that we're going to do that we weren't going to do before. And one example would be there's restrooms on the second floor of the bank building. And if everybody knows, if you know the library, there's a bank building in the beginning, in the front, and then... and then there is a 1970s era addition off the back that more or less doubles the size of the bank building. In the second floor of that bank building, there's a balcony that kind of overlooks a two-story space. It's really nice. And the employee bathrooms are in those areas. And previously budgets pretty much said we weren't going to be able to do anything with those bathrooms, but they were, they're pretty bad. So included within the scope of this project now are making sure that the entire facility is brought up to the standards that I think everybody intends. So that also contributes somewhat to the cost associated from the architect. And the last thing I would say is, at the end of the day, you still always have to sort of look to make sure that the, the number is reasonable. And there are thumb rules that we use in the construction industry to compare architects' fees and design fees against the overall value of the project. So for example, we're adding about 5,000 square feet. The cost of that is several million dollars. And if you take approximately some 5% to 9% of that number, which would be a reasonable design fee, that by itself justifies or at least explains a certain amount of the increase. So... The other thing we need to keep in mind is there are some components to this facility that we're essentially adding. Solar, for example, is going to go on the roof. The new addition, and to some extent makes that more feasible than it was before because we have more roof area to, to use. And that has to be integrated with the existing electrical system. It wasn't in the original renovation plan. So that's another capability that's being added and will have to be designed. So some of the fees that are included within the architect's fees are for subcontractors or subconsulants that are handling things like HVAC and electrical redesign, sprinkler. We're putting a sprinkler in the building. It is not currently sprinklered, but now because we're moving a lot of things, we'll be moving a lot of those sprinkler heads. Probably not a big change, but it's something to think about. There's also just one last thing I would say about this is the renovation previously was going to stay within the footprint of the original building. So there was not a need to do a lot of structural work. But the addition necessitates that we have, take structural considerations for the addition itself. It's going to be supported on columns over the parking lot so that we don't lose any parking spaces. And that's, there's a structural component to that and a foundation component that we didn't previously have to worry about. So that kind of explains the fees. I don't know if there's anything I forgot there, Phil.
I'd like to say, you know, and I think at the end of the day, we're in a super duper library we're all going to be proud of. It's going to be adequate size. It's going to be technologically advanced. And I think it's something we're all going to be able to say. It took a long time, but it was worth it. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for coming. I didn't know if Commissioner Holmes or any of the other commissioners had questions at this point, if it's appropriate.
If I could just, again, one of the newer members of the board, I wasn't around for a lot of the history. So I just had a couple of basic questions. I'll start off by stating that, you know, I do support the concept of having a modern library as, as a township asset for the community. You know, obviously when I see a resolution like this, I see a large dollar for the architectials. And I understand that a big component of that is the MBS. But in the same sense, I also know the down roads that come into the figure for the actual build out. And so just a couple of quick questions, just you and me. First, how much was already spent on architectials? You indicated that there was kind of a round one and then you're now kind of in round two based on changed circumstances, if you know.
I think it was, and Amy would probably know this, I think it was like $158,000, something like that. But I think it's about that has been, been spent.
And my, just my own knowledge, you indicate to me some of the... So I believe you're expanding 5,000 square feet. I guess you had a 25, 20,000 square foot building. We're putting it to about 25,000 square foot.
Yeah.
Usable space is kind of key there. We're, we're picking, most of the addition is going to be usable. There's more than 20,000 square feet in the existing library, but, you know, there's a lot of it like mechanical rooms and some things like that that aren't considered to be usable space. So when we talk about adding, you know, 25%, we're talking about adding to the part of the library where the books are and the people are, you know?
Okay. And I guess my question, my own knowledge, is just what is it, I guess, what aspects of the library that you are either unable to perform now or not able to perform to the level that you'd like to perform that will, that are being addressed by this renovation, that are, that this new space is providing?
Well, I think you just approved a new boiler system for us. I mean, everything has fallen apart, number one.
And I apologize. I mean, if I can clarify, I, I, you're right, we did approve the new boiler. Oh, thank you. We did approve the new boiler system. And I, and again, I understand the building is very old, you know, the addition by itself is very old. And so, you know, the sprinklers, the HVAC, that again, I guess I was talking more from a programming point of view. What, what, what services are you either not able to offer to the residents of the township or able to offer in a manner that you think that you could expand upon that are going to be satisfied by this expansion?
I, I think a couple of things. There's a term called a maker space, which a lot of libraries have done, where it allows people to come in and really use their hands and greater technology and so forth. We don't have space for that. This will provide us space. The other thing is because of the size, we have adults and middle schoolers primarily in the same space. And funny if you have middle schoolers, that's, you really know that's not a good idea, okay? And it provides us, the chief will tell you every once in a while, we have some problems with the middle school. So it will allow us to segment the usage so there will be a special place for seniors, special place for, you know, middle schools, high schools, the, the young, young kids. You know, we're basically a family library and it's important to have a family atmosphere and a safe atmosphere in that library. Technology will be vastly improved, hopefully video capabilities. I mean, one of the things we learned during the pandemic is that we can do things, provide our services. You don't have to necessarily be there, but we still need the, the space and the studio room to provide videos and zooming capabilities and so forth. So it's going to be, you know, there's nothing, you know, libraries are libraries, but it's a matter of space and how they're laid out. And this will be much more user-friendly, allow us to deal with more people in the right, the right ways.
Just one thing. If, if I could show you the plans, there was a specific space, and this is common in libraries these days, set aside for tweens, you know, sort of before they get to be teens kind of age group. And, you know, at the time we did it, we kind of squeezed it into what was available. And I think anyone here, if they saw those plans, would say, geez, that's not nearly enough room for what you got to do. I mean, it was basically a corner with a table and some chairs. I mean, it was just nothing. Now there's sort of an area for that age group. And it's not like everything's completely segregated. But at the end of the day, it is desirable in modern libraries to provide places where particular age groups feel more comfortable. And this expansion really makes that possible in our library.
The other thing, if I may, is if you go into other libraries now, you'll see tutoring rooms. They're sort of set off. We don't have that. So, you know, a kid comes in to be tutored, they sit at a, you know, one of the large desks and so forth. There's enough to privacy. So there'll be two or three of those rooms set aside so you can come in and someone could get tutored there or have private meetings and so forth, so.
And in terms of communicating with the architect about needs and so on, the, basically the, the layout of the library, is that you two gentlemen or is it another group or work group?
Our director is, is very knowledgeable about what other libraries are doing, what the needs are. We have had, consultants have done other extensive layouts for us. And, you know, we've done focus groups. We'll probably do some focus groups in the process of, of doing this.
I have no further questions. Thank you for bringing me up to speed.
Sure. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, anything else from the township manager?
Not at this time.
Okay, the board will, the chair will now recognize, or somebody would move to approve the minutes?
Yes, I would like to approve the meeting minutes of June 13th, 2022. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments, questions, additions, deletions? None? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We move on to the approval of warrants.
Mr. President, motion to approve the following warrant, number 7, 2022, totaling $4,748,155.86. General and sewer fund payroll for June 9th, 2022 in the amount of $936,744.16. General and sewer fund payroll for June 23rd, 2022 in the amount of $814,255.82. General and sewer fund payroll for July 7th, 2022 in the amount of $702,982.67. General fund disbursements, number 7, 2022, in the amount of $1,724,805.87. Sewer fund disbursements, number 7, 2022, in the amount of $142,553.86. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 7, 2022, in the amount of $40,581.91. Capital projects fund disbursement, number 7, 2022, in the amount of $182,785.63. American rescue plan fund in the amount of $188,191.32. Credit card statement ending June 27th, 2022, in the amount of $15,254.62.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions, additions, deletions? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Move on to item number 11, ordinance number P12, 2022, traffic.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P12, 2022, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, special purpose parking zones in front of 819 Ardmore Avenue. Second.
I have a motion in a second. This is the first reading. Any questions, comments, deletions?
Is this a handicap spot?
Oh, sorry.
Is this a handicap spot or what, what is, what's the special parking?
That's what they are, usually. That's how we indicate them on our agenda.
Is it a handicap one? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Item number 12, resolution number 2270 of 2022, women's health bill.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2270... 2270, 2022, of the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township, affirming support of reproductive freedom. Whereas in its 1973 landmark decision, Roe versus Wade, the Supreme Court of the United States acknowledged that the ability to make private medical decisions impacting women's own health was a right enshrined in the U.S. Constitution and could not be eliminated by any of the individual states. And whereas a substantial majority of women in the United States have enjoyed these rights for their entire lives. And whereas on June 23rd, 2022, these constitutional rights possessed by 170 million women in the United States, including 25,000 women in Havreford Township, were eliminated by the Supreme Court of the United States. And whereas that immediate ramifications of a woman's loss per right to an abortion are widespread and already have impacted a woman's right to interstate travel, access to medical care and access to pharmaceutical products. And whereas by eliminating these rights and protections of privacy, the Supreme Court of the United States has given states the legal right to restrict women's reproductive health care, to intervene between a woman and her own health care providers and to restrict a woman's right to plan her own family. And whereas in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, women are now legally required to inform their spouses before obtaining a legal abortion, a requirement that is no longer prohibited by Roe versus Wade and Planned Parenthood versus Casey. And whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have the opportunity to restore these rights by passing and signing into federal law the, quote, "The Women's Health Protection Act of 2021," end of quote, HR 3755, which will quantify the reproductive rights and the rights to medical self-determination provided previously recognized by Roe versus Wade. And whereas the Women's Health Protection Act of 2021, HR 3755, will protect the health of, the health care providers provide abortion services. And whereas the Women's Health Protection Act of 2021, HR 3755, will also protect the health of the mother, protect victims of rape and incest from additional harm and protect women experiencing a medical emergency. Now there, now therefore, be it resolved by undersigned commissioners of the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners as follows. The undersigned commissioners of the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners call on the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate to pass the Women's Health Protection Act of 2021, HR 3755, immediately. And that it be transmitted to President Biden's desk for his signature to become federal law. And further, be it resolved that the undersigned commissioners of the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners hereby direct the township manager to transmit this resolution to the Speaker of the House, the Senate Majority Leader and the President of the United States, resolved this 11th day of July, 2022.
Do I have a second? Do not call.
Second.
From the audience, everybody had a chance to speak. It is now time for board members to speak on this issue. We have a motion in a second, discussion. Would anyone like to speak on this?
I don't know if I'm out of order on this or what the rules are. I'll defer to you, but I'm motioning to table the, table the resolution.
Second, second to table.
There's a motion to table on a second. We need to take a vote on the motion to table in a second. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp.
No.
Commissioner McCluskey.
No.
Commissioner Cavender.
No.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
No.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. A motion to table fails. Is there any discussion? Any commissioner would like to say anything on the topic?
If I could briefly.
Yes, Mr. Gondak.
Let me start off by saying that, you know, I, I respect the differences of opinions that people have. I respect that people have different values and different beliefs. I may not agree with different, you know, I may not agree with everyone out here or on the Board of Commissioners. I might disagree a little bit. I might disagree a lot. It depends on what it is we're talking about. But I openly acknowledge that I truly respect people's right to have differing opinions. That being said, I don't personally view this resolution as a discussion of differing opinions. I personally view this resolution as a form of government overreach. When I was... In, in my humble opinion, when commissioners are elected, or in my case, at least now appointed, it is our role to represent the constituents of the township in matters that affect them directly, whether it be every day or once a year or once every five years. Things like trash, police, streets, public parks, lights at public parks, the library. There is, in my, again, in my opinion, there is no factual circumstance that exists... There is, in my, again, in my opinion, there is no factual circumstance that exists or will exist where abortion will come before this Board of Commissioners. Whether it be, uh, preempted by state constitution, whether it be preempted by federal judiciary, whether it be preempted by state judiciary, or whether it be preempted by federal or state legislative, legislative, uh, you know, ordinances, uh, it's not coming before us. And if it's not coming before us, I, I don't, uh, feel that it's correct for the commissioners to vote on this. Um, I think everyone in this room, and everyone who's watching this, and everyone who will hear what is being said, will agree that regardless of what point you, what, what position you take on abortion, it is probably one of the most controversial, um, topics in existence in our society today. In, in a society today where we are all exceedingly revved up about a lot of things, and, you know, the society as a whole is, uh, you know, on edge more now than I think at, you know, any time in, in recent past. Um, I, I just find that taking an action, uh, that doesn't have any substantive value, but yet will, will basically upset at least half of this township, um, is, is something that I think that we should be avoid, that we should be avoiding. Um, I, I understand that an argument can be made that, you know, as commission, as commissioners on the Board of Commissioners, uh, you know, we are kind of the township leaders, and, and we are, you know, one of our tasks is to lead the discussion and lead the debate, um, of topics, whether they be easier, they be controversial. Um, however, I don't view this resolution as a debate. Um, it's a very, you know, it's a very specific point that's being advocated, and it's being advocated at the federal government. Again, I, I have an issue not just, you know, with the, the, the topic, uh, but, you know, the, the fact that it doesn't even address the state government, I think, uh, by itself is, is a whole another issue. Um, for that reason, I, I will state that without taking any, any, uh, without, I'm not voting on the merit of this. Um, when our vote is called, I will be abstaining because I don't think that this is something that should be before the Board of Commissioners, and I don't think that it should be acted upon by any of us.
Thank you, Mr. Gondik. Uh, any other commissioner?
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioner Trombetta.
While it's true that our primary role as commissioners is to make sure that our streets are paved and our trash is picked up, it's absolutely within our authority to call upon the state or federal government for issues that impact township residents. Examples of times when this authority has been used. Thank you.
Stop. Everybody respected what everybody had to say in this audience. It is now the commissioner's turn to speak. Please do not speak while they're speaking. If you want to react afterwards, you may. Do not interrupt people, and do not mumber, mumble while they are speaking.
I recognize that in this room, my opinion may be unpopular. But examples of times when this authority has been used in the past include unanimous resolution to support Trump's impeachment, to support local police radar on gun control measures, and recently to express our support for the people of Ukraine. So we've established precedent for passing resolutions such as this already. Not only do we have the authority to do this, but I would contend that we have the obligation to support a resolution such as this when populations lose their rights. When the Supreme Court of the United States of America overturned Roe v. Wade, the Roe v. Wade decision, they effectively took the rights of women away from making choices about their reproductive health. Whether they support this decision or not, 25,000 approximately residents of Haverford Township will be impacted by this decision in one way or another. Losing their equal rights and their liberties, which are two founding principles stated in the preamble of the Constitution. I'll go one further to say that as elected township officials, it's our responsibility to work to promote public health and safety. Numerous reports, including one I read, um, by Harvard, indicates that the lack of access to proper medical care and resources poses a serious risk to public safety and health. Harvard reported that these laws do not result in fewer abortions, but instead compel women to risk their lives and health by seeking out unsafe abortion care. I'm happy to have further conversations with my constituents. I recognize that this can be a loaded topic. But I will be supporting the resolution today, and I ask for my colleagues to join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Cavender?
I just want to weigh in and agree with Commissioner Trombetta and make a couple of comments regarding the resolution. Recent actions by the Supreme Court and the Pennsylvania General Assembly on the issue of reproductive rights are very likely to harm, as Commissioner Trombetta mentioned, the public health here in Haverford Township. I want all residents to know that I and other colleagues will always look carefully at anything we can do that would protect women's health and safety in Haverford Township. That is our responsibility as local elected government officials. Without the right to abortion, women lose their ability to plan their own lives, build their own families, and control their own bodies. This fundamental right currently is being dismantled by an activist Supreme Court and a moralistic state legislature. I want people in Haverford Township to know that their local government supports a woman's right to choose.
Commissioner Cavender? Thank you. Uh, any commissioner?
Mr. President.
Sure.
I share the outrage that many of you expressed in the Supreme Court's decision to overturn Roe v. Wade. It's approved, its decision was especially incongruent, given the court's decision the week before to weaken, uh, the state's ability to govern, uh, the use of guns.
Because that's a constitutional right.
I do not speak out of the audience. Do not speak from the audience. It's the last, I do not, I, please, I will have to ask you to leave. If you will not, I will have to ask you to leave. You will not stop screaming from the audience. You had your, your time to speak. You spoke eloquently. Thank you. It is now time for the people in this board to speak.
States are now in power to pass laws that govern in the, um, intimate decisions in regards to reproduction, but increasingly unable to place any meaningful restrictions on who can own a gun, where they can carry it, or the type of weapon that they can be, can be purchased. It's also hard to have confidence in the intellectual honesty of the justices who swear under oath before the Senate that they believe in the principle of judicial precedence, and then overturn a decision that has been settled law for 50 years as soon as they have five votes to do it. Despite my personal opinion in regards to the court's decision, I do not think it's appropriate for our board to make, to pass a resolution that will have no, um, that we, you have no legislative ability, um, to act on, and that will have no impact. This, this resolution will have no impact on Congress. I believe the majority of people in Haverford Township, like the majority of the people in, in, in the country, um, support a right to abortion. But it's a question of how they support it. There's a majority that would probably support the Bill Clinton line that abortion should be safe, legal, and rare. Right, there's probably not a, a, the same, uh, level of support for the Women's Health Protection Act. This was a bill that failed to gain the support of the pro-choice Republicans Susan Collins and Lisa Murkowski because it overrode protection of religious liberties. As a physician, I have great concern that the bill does not provide protection for health care providers who choose not to offer abortion services for moral or religious needs. Let's make our speeches, write our state and federal officials, support candidates who share our beliefs, but let's not pass a feel-good resolution that will alienate a substantial number of our community and have no impact on any legislation.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make my statements known as well. I, I do not feel it's appropriate that we take an action on this. This, this issue is going to divide our community for no valid reason. We're weighing in, and I understand the comments about gun control and the Ukraine. Two different animals. Gun control affects everyone in this township. Ukraine is the violation of human rights and mass killing by weapons of mass destruction and artillery and war on an unarmed community. This is totally different. To compare those is comparing apples and oranges. We are trying to take a stand on an issue that is ethical, moral, and extremely personal. And this is not an issue where it's 90 to 100. This is all over the board, and we're trying to take a stand and speak for our community when in fact, we are not speaking for our entire community. Someone made a comment at one of our meetings, if we had, you know, on the equal rights, on the, uh, Human Relations Committee, if we, if we offended or took an action against a majority or even half of our community, we would fight like hell to right that wrong. And here, we're the people that are, that are causing action and harm to people of our community by trying to pass a, a political will on an ethical, moral, and extremely personal issue for all our residents. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't want to forward that. I don't, I don't agree with the language of the resolution that the undersigned commissioners of Haverford Township, commissioners will call in the United States. If we take an action and it's voted by a five majority, it goes out under the township logo, attested, signed by our president for that year, and attested by our township manager. The fact that we're trying to do an undersigned thing, if, if those people in support of it want to send a letter forward, they can sign a letter, but we don't pass it as a township resolution, as an official act of our local government, to the people here. And that's my opinion.
Yes, I would like to say a few, few things.
All right, Commissioner Quinn, yes.
I agree with what Bill and Brian and Judge Tariq have said. I believe that this divides our town, and I think in a world where we have lots of, uh, divide, this is not the right, right thing to do. And I, I, as a met, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm a member of this board, never thought that I would ever have to vote in any way on this top, 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 uh, topic. I believe that this is something that our state and fed, 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 federal officials are, are the ones to vote to, or to vote on this. I read, or I represent pro-life and pro-choice people in, in this town. I've not ever been asked on my opinion, 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 opinion on, well, on, well, on, well, on this. I am a man, so I was always told by everybody to sit down and not, not, not express my views. But, uh, however, I was taught by lots of women in, in my life to be pro-life, women who mean a lot to, 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 to me, and then I fought for this cause for years. I am proud that I am pro, that I am pro-life, but I'm also proud that I can sit down with an ob, an open mind and hear others and how they, 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 they feel too. That is what our world lacks, is for us to sit, sit down and talk, and talk about this and not attack, attack everybody. Then, well, this is something I cannot and will not sign.
Would any other commissioner like to speak?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
I would first like to thank everyone who spoke during the public comment session at the beginning of the meeting, because I listened very carefully and with openness to what everyone said. I also would like to thank the other members of the board for sharing their thoughts about, well, this is a very sensitive issue that we all have a lot of different opinions about, that maybe there are better laws that could be drafted at the federal and the state level to enshrine a woman's right to make her own self-determination, to decide what her fate will be, as opposed to having the government decide for her. I truly believe that we need to, as individuals, think about standing, I, I believe, I'm going to speak from the I perspective, I believe we need to protect a woman's bodily autonomy, that woman's right to make her own healthcare decisions, that woman's right to make choices about her family, and that woman's right to privacy, because that is being endangered right now. All of our rights to privacy are in jeopardy right now. This is, in fact, I believe, an issue that impacts everyone in the township, because it is a human issue. It's not a federal, it's not state, it's not local, it's a human issue, and it really does impact all of us. When the decision that the Supreme Court made in Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization occurred, I had a conversation with my daughter, who was absolutely furious and afraid, because she felt that her right for self-determination had been taken away. And that is a right I have enjoyed my entire life, and I will fight to make sure my daughter has that voice, because choice is the foundation of our country, I believe. So I will be voting in favor of the resolution, but I do so with great respect to all of my colleagues here on the board, and having heard your words.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp. Does anyone else have anything else to offer? I would just say two quick things. A resolution is a, is an action. A resolution or a proclamation is an action of this board. It is not a statement of the, um, of, of the township citizens themselves, and nor does this have the effect of an ordinance. And it, it is, it is this act, this is the one act that somebody who feels very strongly on this issue, um, and is in this position of township commissioner, has, has the ability to make. Uh, we're not able to pass Pennsylvania, laws in Pennsylvania, we're not able to pass laws at the federal level. Um, but we are allowed as a, as a board to proclaim things, as we did earlier in this meeting, um, and to pass resolutions and direct our township personnel to undertake certain steps on our behalf, on behalf of the commissioners of the Board of, of, of Haverford Township. I've heard over and over, I've read in emails and heard the message either explicitly or, or between the lines, um, to stay in my lane. Um, I didn't run for this office 17 years ago to stay in my lane, and I haven't stayed in my lane any of these 17 years that I've been here. And if that, um, if, if that is a problem, then, uh, that is a, I will deal with those consequences. But I think this is, um, this is not a crisis that we created. This is not division that we are fostering. This is an issue that exists out there, and is an issue that must be addressed, and it must be addressed at the federal level. If it is addressed only at the state level, its impact will simply be on people with less means than others. Anybody with money will always be able to go somewhere, including another country, to undergo this procedure. But if we go state by state, we're going to have the same problems that this country faced in 1850 and 1860, with the states all having different rights about how to deal with slavery. So for that reason, I believe this is an appropriate step for the township to take. Um, and I would now call upon our township manager to call the roll.
Commissioner Gondik.
Abstain.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
No.
Commissioner Hart.
No.
Commissioner Wexler.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We will now move on to resolution number 2271, the intent resolution.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution 22...
Why don't we take a five-minute recess while, for those folks who want to, want to leave?
I don't even care about the dead baby story. Shame on you. Baby feed in jars.
We're in a five-minute recess. If anybody would like to step out. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now returning to the meeting. We are on the air. Chief? Okay, we're now returning to our regular meeting. We are at, um, item number 14, I'm sorry, item number 13.
Mr. President?
Uh, the intent resolution. Mr. McCluskey.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution number 2271, 2022, approving a resolution of the township of Haverford, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, declaring the township's official intent with respect to reimbursement proceeds of tax-exempt obligations of capital expenditures made or to be made for certain projects, providing for certain related matters, providing for several, several vulnerability, and setting forth an effective date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments to the intent resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Item number 14, Resolution Number 2272 of 2022, Fiscal Year 23 Police Traffic Services PTS Grant.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2272, 2022, authorizing David R. Berman Township Manager to sign a one-year Police Traffic Services Grant on its behalf.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Township Manager?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Item number 15, Authorization for the Winfield Drive Flood Mitigation Study.
Mr. President, motion to authorize change order number one in the amount of $39,200 to Michael Baker International, Inc., for a topographical survey and base mapping conceptual grading plan, alternatives in hydraulic and hydraulic analysis relating to the Winfield Drive Flood Mitigation Study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Berman, do you want to give us 30 seconds on this?
Yes, the Board awarded this contract in early 2021. We did some work on the study with Michael Baker International. Shortly after that, we received word from FEMA that we would be receiving a grant to help us pay for the cost of the study. Last month, we finally received word of the grant, so it took many months actually. We're poised to begin and expand that study to include some of the items that are included in this change order that are beyond those that were included in the original contract, so we are ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Mr. Berman, are we just looking at that area, or are they looking at the effect of stormwater runoff upstream?
Yeah, I should have mentioned that for the resident who was here this evening from Arlington. Yes, the study and the RFP were developed, and the proposal includes an analysis of any impacts that any potential improvements for Winfield Drive would have on the upstream or downstream areas.
Okay. But it's not looking at issues of how much water is coming downstream to hit Winfield to lessen the water coming in, the stormwater, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, that is part of the analysis. We're looking at a number of options that would address the amount and the velocity of the stormwater coming into that area where Winfield Drive has the two walls that were discussed earlier.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the issue is the bottlenecking that occurs down there at Merwood Park, and the analysis here, because it's pretty good downstream, but there are some topographical issues that they're examining that we hope can increase the capacity of Merwood to hold more water, and that obviously helps downstream, and it stops the flooding that takes place Any other questions from any other commissioners? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Number 16, Contract Awards and Purchases. The first one is Haverford Township Administration Building Facade.
Mr. President, make a motion to ratify emergency contract with Belfour, USA in the amount of $47,000 for the selective demolition, removal, and hauling of stone facade from the Haverford Township Municipal Services Building.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments from any commissioners?
I would just make a brief comment and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that when this contract team was set to come before us before, it was actually a higher number, but our township manager was able to speak with the company and get them to sharpen their pencil a little bit to save the township some money.
Thank you, Dave.
So I would just like to say thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
And that's all. Oh. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or want to speak highly of Dave? Anybody want to criticize Dave? All right. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
The next contract award is a proposal for architectural services, stone veneer replacement at the township building.
President, I'll make a motion to award professional services contract to KCBA Architects in the amount of $19,500 to prepare construction documents and administer the bid and construction processes for installation of a new stone veneer on the front of the township building.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this?
This one, I do have a question. It was the original architects of the building.
That is correct.
How'd they screw up so bad on the first go around and we're going around the next one?
We performed, as you know, we performed a study of what went wrong with the facade, and we don't have the written results, but we do have the lab results and a verbal that the expert that we engaged assures us that it was not a design issue that caused the facade to fall.
Doesn't the architect oversee and check compliance with their specs when the building was done?
The architect has involvement with the oversight of the process, but there would have been a construction manager on the project at the time who would have had that oversight.
Just wanted to ask the question.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to pull an audible here. Can we break into executive session for one minute? All right, colleagues, we're back on the record. The Board went into executive session to discuss an item of potential litigation. We now return to our deliberations on the proposal for architectural services. Commissioner Quinn?
I make a, due to the fact that I was the one to second it, does that impact the vote or anything, or should I let somebody else just to be safe?
Does not.
Okay, cool, I'll do it. I make a motion to table this.
Second.
We have a motion to table, and we have a second. Call the roll, Mr.?
Commissioner Forresty, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
The next proposal, Haverford Township Free Library.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
I would like to make a motion to support the Haverford Township Free Libraries Change Order with Bernard &amp; PC for the redesign and construction administration for the renovation and expansion of the existing library, with future contract costs not to exceed $599,212, which include $138,352 of previously unspent balances.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Our next contract for consideration, the Brookline Park Master Plan.
Mr. President, motion to award the Brookline Park Master Plan contract to Simone Collins, Norristown, PA, in the amount of $53,430, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
Second.
Mr. President, just as some background, after our Board initially voted for the renovation and expansion of the library at the Mill Road, a committee was formed consisting of members of the Parks Department, the Parks Board, and community members, and we discussed plans over about a six-month period for an expanded park at Brookline. The committee did seek input from the community and developed ideas for an expanded park, but ultimately felt that further input on designing the park was needed. The Parks Board issued, the Parks Department issued an RFP for which many firms responded with proposals, and ultimately, the Simone Collins Group was chosen. It's a unique opportunity to develop a park and expanded open space in Haverford, something that we don't typically come across, and I believe everyone involved is excited about the possibilities for this park.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Hart, just so I understand, this is an award for Simone Collins to come up with a plan?
They will be doing community outreach to get more input on plans, and they will then help develop the plan with input from the Parks Department and the Parks Board.
Are there any questions or comments from any other commissioners? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
The next contract for consideration involves Park Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Mr. President, motion to award the Park Recreation and Open Space Plan to Herbert Rowland &amp; Grubeck Incorporated, King of Prussia, in the amount of $74,951.85, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Again, Mr. President, just some background, this is somewhat the equivalent of the comprehensive municipal plan that we've been working on for the last several years, although this one is aimed specifically at our parks and open space. The park plan will provide direction for the development of recreation programs, development of facilities, acquisition of land for open space, and it's also very helpful to have one of these plans in place when you apply for grants. Something to be noted that actually, we did receive a grant from Delaware County, which will cover the cost of this contract. I think Delaware County recognized that our Parks Department has been sort of in the forefront over the last 10, 20 years in developing programs, in developing our parks, and developing trails, and they felt that this would help further enhance what we've been doing in the past.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart, does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Next item is near and dear to my heart, the playground equipment for Guest Park.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of playground equipment for Guest Park from Recreation Resource USA, Kennet Square, PA, under co-service contract 0.014E22249 in the amount of $35,541.
Second. Any questions or comments from anybody on this? The Guest Track is a hidden park just off Haverford Avenue and along the back of the homes on Homestead, and has been badly in need of this equipment, so I encourage my colleagues to authorize this purchase. Hearing no other comments, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Item number 14, Resolution Number 2272 of 2022, Fiscal Year 23 Police Traffic Services PTS Grant.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2272, 2022, authorizing David R. Berman Township Manager to sign a one-year Police Traffic Services Grant on its behalf.
Second.
I do have a question. Are these lights LED? Thank you.
Just add, there was a comment in public comment, I know Steel Field has, you know, it's in the middle of a neighborhood, and there's other issues there to be considered, but I do think lighting of our fields has been immensely appreciated by residents, you know, at the crack, at the police field and at other facilities, and now at Caricon. And we have plenty of activities that are taking place on these fields, so I do think it's something we should continue to investigate how we can do more of, if possible, to provide the type of services that our residents want and expect. We're voting for this, but also encourage us to continue to look at adding more.
Thank you. Mr. McCluskey, anybody else have any other comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
We are now at the Continuation of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Anyone can come forward and speak for three minutes on any topic. I will start here on the left, I know Ms. Alvery.
Michelle Alvery, 134 Hastings Avenue, Haverford Town, Chairman of the Parks Board. And I'd just like to thank you all for passing the first item and the last four items on this long agenda tonight, all of which affect Parks and Recreation in this township. And I can especially say that this is an extremely exciting time for Haverford Township, which is already one of the highlights in the state of Pennsylvania for Parks and Recreation. Haverford Reserve and the crack got us seen across the state of Pennsylvania, but being able to build a park from the ground up, I had the privilege of doing that in my hometown when I was a senior in college, it was my senior project. We knocked down a school, same kind of situation where that was the design process and so forth. It's very exciting to involve all of the people in the community to plan this new Brookline Park, and I really think this consulting firm, Simone Collier, is the right firm to do. I'm also very confident in the firm that we've selected for the Open Space Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, and although Commissioner Hart made the comment that similar to the Comprehensive Plan for the township, it's much more specific to our Parks and Recreation. And one of the things we hope to identify is equity across the township, so that we're dispersing facilities so that people don't have to drive from one end of the township to the other to have those same kinds of facilities, and that's one of the things we're hoping to get out of this Comprehensive Plan, as well as to help Brian and his staff better plan for their budgeting in the future, because we all know that our Parks Department is spread very thin, and we need to have them maintain these wonderful facilities we have, so we need to have a better idea on those, you know, needs for the township. So, thank you for passing all that, and happy Recreation and Parks Professional Day this Friday.
You're most welcome. Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, I'm Helene Connery Smith. I live here in Haverford Township. I'm coming here today because I'm a little concerned about the Comprehensive Plan. There's a lot of continuing conversation of this plan, and it's all hypotheticals. Tonight, there was a discussion of flooding in the town. There has been an increased flooding in areas in Wards 5, 2, and 3 particularly, and it's noted throughout the citizens. And my question to this board is that why are we continuing to discuss hypotheticals and when we really need to have action plans? Our township is over capacity, and we're pretty, we're pretty full. We're full of traffic and congestion on Lawrence Park, Westchester Place, Eagle Road, and Haverford Road. In 2013, there was a study done on page 20 of your Comprehensive Plan that states the congestion has yet to- congestion has yet to cease, and we still continue to talk and discuss these issues. We're talking about apartments and impervious structures such as parking garages. Are we out of parking spots in this town? I just don't understand, we're gonna continue to talk about building in an overpopulated, crowded town already. We're having flooding issues, and we're talking about building again and bringing in more and more people. When I look at this, and we talk about carefully managing stormwater, the runoff, we have yet to address this issue, and this has been going on since 2012. Naylor's run behind it continues to rise. Currently, there are 1,000 residents per one acre, that's .01 acre per person. Do you really think we need to build more housing in this township? Do we really need to have more apartments in this township? Do we really need to have more parking in this township? MCP codes discusses all the new development, and I ask, where are we placing this new development? Why are we continually trying to usurp all the things that we have great in this town and then turn it into something new? I've been here 24 years, I purchased my house, I knew what I was getting into when I purchased in an old town, I'm from South Philly, I moved out here for a yard and a driveway, that's why I moved here, and I found these lovely people in this town, and I'm really not liking what's happening to this town right now. I want to say, we're putting the cart before the horse, we have a wish list, and it really doesn't help your constituents when we're not addressing issues such as traffic congestion, flooding, and our community. We are continuing to spend on a Comprehensive Plan that's not comprehensive and not addressing what we, your constituents, need. Someone here said you're leaders, you're not, you're elected officials, we, the people, elected you, and I'm gonna hold you accountable to this, because I care about my community, I care about this township, I care about what's going on. And secondly, I'm happy, Mr. Wexler, Commissioner Wexler, that you brought that up. I was wondering, this building was built in 2017, we're gonna spend $19,500 to the same company that put on this facade? We're really gonna do that? We're gonna spend it again and give it to the same person when we already had an issue? And lastly, I want to ask for that police blotter. It's come to my attention that we really don't have those weekly emails anymore and the postings on social media, I'm concerned, there's checks being stolen and rewritten, it's all over your police blotter when you go in and you look at it. I'm paying attention, I'm paying attention what's happening in my town, because Philadelphia is crime-ridden, and it's coming up here, it's coming up our Parkway, it's coming up Westchester Pike. I hear the drag racing at night, I'm not too far off Westchester Pike. I'm happy our police are now able to police that area and pull over people. I care about this township, and I want to see change. Tonight's resolution, that has nothing to do with your constituents, you remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on any other topic? Anybody here on the left? Anybody here on the right? That is the end of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items, what's that?
I also, along with the resolution tonight, I think we should, as a, do what you legally can through an ordinance to help ensure that, as far as you legally can, that abortion rights ensure that women are not jailed and the healthcare providers are not jailed. I also know that abortion is a divisive issue, however, whether you know it or not, it affects everybody, and everybody, whether they know it or not, has, knows somebody, has somebody close to them who has had to get abortion care. I would also encourage the, on the thing about resolutions, I also would encourage you to speak out about the note that Clarence Tompkins had in his opinion about the relooking at Griswold, Obergefell, and Lawrence, notably, he did not include Loving. Those decisions were all correctly decided, but the fact that they were gonna put gay rights, sodomy, you know, relationship rights at risk, and say, basically, egon states to challenge them, I think that's a little disconcerting, I think we should make a statement on that. I also would say that, you know, I work in Philadelphia, go there every day, I spend almost most of my waking hours there, it is not a crime-prone place. Yes, there's a lot of riffraff there, but it has much more to offer than just riffraff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, we will now move on. Before we get to new business, I know there were two discussion points that we did want to address tonight, just indicate that we will be addressing them in August. Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. The Environmental Committee, Board of Commissioners Environmental Committee, held a meeting this past week. We have decided to remove the composting ordinance, which we originally hoped to have on the agenda tonight, we are postponing it until we have further discussion and some final language to present to the board. We wanted to take some time to really carefully consider the input that we received from the Haverford Township staff before finalizing the language, so we've done that, and hope to have something soon. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation, Commissioner Trombetta. I also want to take advantage of the same time, because we did not have a work session, we didn't, we don't have an item on the agenda for committee updates, but I just wanted to remind all of our colleagues that we were supplied by Mr. Pinoni's office of the traffic coming presentation from a number of years ago, he will be updating it, and we plan to have a discussion about this presentation, as well as various policies relating to traffic coming at our August work session, so I encourage everybody to look at what Mr. Pinoni sent and look forward to the additional information that he will be sharing. We will now move on to new business, is there any commissioner who has new business they would like to bring before the board? We will now move to other business, and I will start with Mr. Gondek.
I will keep it short and sweet, I don't really have any announcements, other than I hope everyone enjoys the remainder of their summer, and just be conscientious, obviously with school out, there's kids all over the place, especially at nighttime, so just drive safely. Other than that, enjoy your, the rest of the summer, and stay cool.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gondek. Ms., Mr. Forsti Grubb?
Just like to echo what you said, Ryan, about there are kids everywhere, so I hope that everyone's very careful about paying attention to speed limits and the stop signs, that you come to a full and complete stop, because when you turn that corner, there might be a bunch of kids playing stickball, or soccer, or just riding bikes in the street. I would also like to highlight that the library is bringing back their Sound of Summer program, their concerts, and this Friday at 7:30 in Merwood Park, bring a chair and maybe a picnic, and you can catch some bossa nova, which sounds pretty wonderful, so I hope you can take advantage of some music and the beautiful, hopefully, good, cool weather on Friday. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsti Grubb. Commissioner McCluskey?
Yeah, I just echo the comments that I hope everyone continues to enjoy their summer, a little bit left, and I did want to, just before we get out of July, we talked about it last month, that July 4th, there'd be a lot of neighborhood activities in Haverford Township, you know, we're not, we're not like Springfield or Media where we have big municipal wide parades or events, we have little neighborhood events at the Grange, at Merwood Park, the Oakmont Fire Company does one at Grassland, and the Ninth Ward, I know there's ones, we talked about, we joked about it last time about which one, everyone has the best one, but it's part of, you know, the charm of our community, but it, putting those things together takes a lot of volunteer hours, and most of the things we talked about, there was baseball coaches here, there's various other sports activities, there's music coaches, there's everyone who's volunteering at camps or other events this summer, so just thank you to the people who volunteer their time in the town. That's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Commissioner Cavender?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot tonight, I do want to extend my congratulations to Parks and Rec, and thank them for all their work, as well as Public Works this time of year, the parks are heavily used, the recreation programs, as we've talked about, are always full, and I know the Parks and Rec team is out there making sure the parks are maintained, and that the weeds are gone, and that the kids can have a good time and the trash is picked up, and we appreciate it. I also want to just congratulate Sukrit Ghazwami, he's the director of the Haverford Township Free Library, for his leadership, he's on the board of the Freedom to Read Foundation, and they are hosting a symposium on Where Intellectual Freedom and Social Justice Meet: A Call to Action, so I'd like to recognize Sukrit for his time that he gives back to the library community and the community at large. That's all I have, I hope everyone is enjoying their summer, you can get out to the crack or the Sounds of Summer concert series, and I'll look forward to seeing everybody in August, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, thank you, I would like to also echo whatever, what everybody said about the, when you drive down streets, they drive slow, just because of other kids out there, and I would also like to thank the police for everything that they've done, just like anywhere on the streets, it seemed like every street is blocked off in this town, I think I drove down one street to follow the signs and went through other detours that just led me to detours, so thank you for the police for all of that, and last week, we saw at the July 4th thing, the shooting down there, and I'd also like to thank the police for all that they do to keep us safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, I don't have much, it's been a long night, everybody have a good rest of their night and rest of July, see you next month.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, I just have two words of thanks, Hilltop Civic Association for the volunteers that put together their July 4th celebration, the kids enjoyed it, the bicycle parade, it's a real tradition, it's an old-fashioned one, I remember doing it as a kid, putting the cards, baseball cards on your spokes and making a noise, but I thank the volunteers, they did a great job, and I also want to thank the fire companies that participated in all those parades, and our police department that led us, the two parades that I participated in, and thank you to all for taking the time on their holiday and for their volunteerism, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Trombetta?
Thank you. Just a couple of reminders, on July 14th, the Planning Commission is having their next meeting, where they will be discussing the Comprehensive Plan, so I encourage folks to attend that, that's at 7:00 PM on the 14th. On July 19th, the Environmental Advisory Committee for Haverford Township is hosting a composting webinar at 7:00 PM, you can learn more about the Advisory Committee at On July 23rd, the Kelly Center for Music Arts and Community is co-hosting a summer jam with the Paddock Farm Civic Association, that will be at Paddock Park, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and you can find out more information on the Kelly Center's website. And then finally, wanted to give a shout out also to our Parks and Rec Department, I saw today that they were spotlighted by the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society, I highly recommend watching that, it was really fun to watch, and just thank you so much for all the work that you're doing in our parks, go to YouTube if you want to see PRPS Spotlight Haverford.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta, I just have a couple things. One, I do want to thank you, ma'am, for your comments on the Comprehensive Plan, that is very useful and helpful, this plan is not yet finished, we are still getting input from residents, and certainly, people will take your comments into consideration, so thank you for them. And I want to thank everybody who participated tonight, obviously, there was a very, very serious issue that was under consideration tonight, and I want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful comments, and I want to thank the audience for participating and for their comments, and for the respect they showed for everybody who had something else to say, and I do want to thank the baseball folks and flooding in Arlington for the much-needed interruption during the middle, so, thank you both. And let me thank Saba, every July 4th, they give me the opportunity to give out three first-place awards in the bike decorating contests and immediately lose 100 parents' votes for all the other kids that don't win, so they did a great job as usual, 20 years I've been going to the Saba event at Elwell Park, and it was really, really enjoyable, and wouldn't happen without the great volunteers and the great participation of the people in their neighborhood, so thanks to them, and to all the civic associations, and our police, and our fire departments who all work that day to make these parades happen, to make them safe, and to make this a really, really great township. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.